Okay.
Hi, it's Jerry Roberts and welcome back to another episode of Newsmakers Journal of the Plague Year. It is Tuesday, October 6th, and we are talking today with Dr. Jacqueline Reed, Jackie Reed, a candidate for the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. Thank you so much for joining us, Jackie.
Well, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity and I look forward to this conversation.
Well, okay, so I gotta ask you what I ask everybody, and I've watched you for four years on the board, and the hours are horrible, the pay is lousy, and everybody's mad at you all the time. So why in the world would you want to have a second term?
Great question. All of the above. I think it's because I really believe in our students. I believe in the future of our students. I believe that they're going to be making decisions for us and for our future, and we need to prepare them in the best possible way possible. And I think with my experience in education and also my experience on this board, that, you know, why would anyone want to take this on? I know what I'm getting into, right? I know what it is. I know the 30-hour weeks. I know, well, beyond 30 hours, you know, and so I know what I'm getting into. And I'm willing to do it because we have a chance and an opportunity to keep this district moving forward in a way that's going to benefit all of our students' futures and their ability to navigate this global world, and certainly in this pandemic. So it's a calling, I guess. I have to give back. I'll just add one more thing. You know, my father was a historian, a professor, and he was an advocate. He actually did the March to Selma. He was one of the few history professors at UCLA that went off in a cohort and marched and said, "We must make a difference." And one of the things that I've always known is education is the key to success or to get to where you want to go, because he said, "Jackie, if you go, if you do whatever you can, get your education, because that's going to make a difference." And number two, give back. And that is what I'm doing, because this isn't something that I'm doing, like you said, for the money or for the prestige or for political aspirations. This is because I believe in giving back, that what I believe is important for students and people to know. And that is, you know, building a world that we can all sort of get along and be able to work together to make sure that we move forward and, you know, be successful in our lives, happy, be happy.
All right. Good enough you talked about your dad a little bit, but, you know, we have this interesting situation where three of the board members incumbents actually didn't get elected because they were the only three who stepped up to run four years ago, obviously including yourself. So you're running for the first time. Catch us up a little bit on your personal bio. You know, where did you grow up and how did you get to San Barbara?
So, personal bio, I grew up in a suburb in LA. And, you know, like I said, my dad was a professor, my mom was a music teacher. And originally, when I graduated from college, I mean, when I graduated from high school, my goal was to be a film producer. I was going to be a television and film producer. I got my degree, actually, I went to UCSB and then transferred to UCLA to get into their film department. And they only let 30 people in that year, so I transferred to Northridge, and I got my BA in radio, TV, film. And from there, I worked my way up into working in, I worked at a radio station, then a TV station, and then a film production company. And I worked on the film Married to the Mob. That's dating myself, but became a script analyst, assistant producer. So that, then I talk about in some of my interviews, is that I got married and I had a child, and then I ended up divorced for situations I don't want to go into now, but I needed to cope and I needed to change my trajectory, because working 14-hour days on a movie set was not going to be welcoming for a single parent. So anyway, I went back to school and struggled as a single parent, going to school, trying to get my masters, get my credential, teach full-time at the same time. I literally started my masters program teaching full-time, because it was a private school, you didn't need a credential, and also raising my son and trying to navigate daycare and, you know. He says to me to this day, cold corn, macaroni and cheese, and Snackwell cookies. That was my youth mom. And I said, "Well, hell, some people could have, you know, worse than that." So we survived.
That's all the food groups, I think, isn't it?
You gotta have that dessert, too, the little Snackwells, right? So anyway, that just led to a trajectory in my career. I taught for a number of years in LA, moved up to Santa Barbara, taught here, and then decided I wanted to start my own educational consultancy. I was ready to kind of fly into a new arena, take on more entrepreneurial role in how we can provide inclusive classrooms and deal with bias and challenges in the classroom. And that led to me volunteering for the Anti-Defamation Leagues No Place for Hate campaign. And I took that on, and then as I volunteered, as people happened, you volunteer and people decide, "Oh, well, that's going well, so we're going to make you this." And so over the course of a year, I became the Associate Regional Director for the tri-counties, because we had expanded the program from just locally. And Santa Barbara Unified was the first district to become No Place for Hate. That was one of our touted recognitions. And so I'm kind of going on and on. But anyway, so I went from working at the ADL to looking at systems and workshops and saying, "Wait a minute. Workshops are great, but what are we, we're kind of putting Band-Aids on situations." ADL's workshops are fabulous, Just Communities has great workshops, all different people have workshops, but what is systemically going on in K-12 education that we are finding ourselves with a root of these issues? Of not having cultural conversations in inclusive classrooms? So I went back to grad school in my old age and then came out and then launched my nonprofit Teachers for the Study of Educational Institutions, which was developing curricula that meets the Fair Act, the mandate in 2012, to ensure that we could have our curriculum be more inclusive. And it was that work that led me to the district again as being a consultant and working with them to provide professional development for teachers. And that also led to me having a relationship with Monique Lamon, Kate Parker, and Pedro Paz. And it was essentially Pedro Paz, when he decided not to run, who said, "Jackie, I'm gonna, I want to spearhead you forward. You need to run, you need to run for school board."
All right. Well, that catches us up, and there's a lot to unpack there in your bio about what's been going on with the school board. Let me ask you first, as you know, assessment is a huge part of education at every level. Give me your assessment of how the incumbent school board has performed over the last four years. You're asking to be rehired by the voters, you're taking a lot of criticism from rivals. You know, how do you think the board has done? What grade would you give it?
You know, I think we're doing very good. And very good would be, I would say, probably like a B. I think, as a lifelong learner, I could never give myself an A, because I see it as a process. And I need to continue to learn and navigate and reassess constantly. Like when I teach a class, the minute I finish that class or even in the middle of that class, I will recalculate. This is not going over well. I don't see anyone absorbing this information. Everybody's looking at me blank. I need to revamp this or redo it. So I would say that I feel good about the work that we've done, that we've accomplished. And I would like to say, too, that when we came on the board, we inherited past policies, issues, transgressions. We inherited a lot of things. And as a board, and I think what I would say to the incumbents is, you can't just come on to a board and say, "I'm going to change this. It's going to happen next week." It's a group effort, it's a team effort. It's, everybody has to work together and really make decisions, and either we agree or we agree to disagree. But it's a process. So, yeah, I think very good. I think certainly I always strive for that A, right? And I think that I will always continue to do that.
So, you know, the people point to the test scores, 45% proficient in math, 56 in English, and obviously the achievement gap, the learning gap, a huge overlay problem for that. What has the board done specifically to address that issue?
So, you know, I really am glad you asked this question, because there's an assumption that we haven't done a thing, that nothing has been focused on literacy and math. I will tell you that certainly as a district with our literacy scores, they are, I just, you know, want to pull up a graph, because I know you like graphs, and to say that I have graphs, too. And essentially, what we know with these graphs is we have, and this is actually a graph that takes us from 2014 to 2019 on our cast scores. And what we see, if we look at this and analyze this, is, wow, that's a straight line across. There's really no growth there. What's the trend?
Right.
So what we're seeing is, so what, one of the conversations that we had with Mr. Matsuoka, a superintendent, was, "What are you doing about this?" And they create, he also talked about with math, for example, he started growing this, what we call, "systems leadership." And the one thing that Mr. Matsuoka was very, very good at was systems, systems processes. And we had his evidence-based systems leadership to really look at the core function of how we practice as educators, and are we improving our teaching and learning? And that process from this report, which is very, very hard for you to see, but he outlines how what the district team needs to do is work with the principal leadership and then to within DeVos, kind of do a deeper dive with the leadership team and teacher teams, and then to student learning. And we will function in that process to really go to do a deeper dive with data. This was brought forward in June of 2018, so just, you know, pre-COVID, obviously, that this was the plan of attack. We are not happy with these scores. We're going to do some work here. This is what our plan is. This is our systems approach. So questions about instruction, assessment, curriculum, systems arose out of looking at this data, and they were to go back and reformulate a plan for that. Since the hiring of Hilda Maldonado, I have actually met with her on this, because I said, "Hey, this plan is in place, but what are you seeing? From your vision, what are you seeing?" And what she said was, you know, "We don't have currently a comprehensive literacy plan either. We're trying to do a deeper dive with math and also with literacy, but essentially, we need a comprehensive literacy plan. There isn't one specifically in place." What that means is we need to develop a multi-tiered system of levels, a tier-one, a tier-two, a tier-three system, where you're including not only English-only students, but GATE students, ELD students, emergent learners, special education students. So the supports that support all of those students. We never adopted, when in 2015, the State of California Department of Education provided the ELD program adoption materials. We haven't adopted those. We don't have a consistent plan. So what we talked about, and what she shared with me was, we need to do, and this is what I've said, is we need to do a deeper dive in looking at our individual students within a school structure and seeing how these principals and teachers and PLC teams are really going to really be driven and focused on those skills and needs for students. And to do that, she's got a whole different data setup that we can access, one page on each student, other pages on schools. And just to finish, what remote learning has provided also is an opportunity to have this shed a light on the lens of how we're looking at education. How are we really teaching and learning? And it's providing actually some positive information, and also what we're finding and what you're hearing and everyone's hearing, the lag behind for our special needs students, for our ELD, our emergent learners. Interesting, an article I read yesterday just came out that there are students that are achieving, that weren't achieving in school, those students with ADD and anxious and anxiety are actually successful currently in remote learning.
That is interesting. All right, let me back up a little bit. So when you said, you know, "We inherited these policies as a board," and obviously the three members who are running now came on, I don't know, almost, not a year, but almost a year after the superintendent, former superintendent was hired, so you inherited a superintendent as well. You were seen as someone who was a very close ally of his, both, I think, on the emphasis on equity, but also, you know, throughout a lot of controversies, whether it was the Matt Academy or Ed Barron's or whatever. What assessment would you give him? How did Matsuoka do, do you think? And what are you hoping to see from Hilda Maldonado that you didn't see from him?
I think that's a great question. Mr. Matsuoka was driven, he was hired, he was brought in specifically to be the one who was going to move the needle on equity. That was the framing of his hiring, and that was pre-my time. So I came after that. So with that framing, that he came in, he got to work. He set the tone. These are, and he also, we didn't have, like I said, we didn't have systems in place. There wasn't a system or process of leadership, how leadership was handled. There wasn't a process, certainly on the board, that we as a board now have done over time, which is, you can't just talk about one thing one day and then the next day make a decision. There needs to be a process. And process is something, I would say, I learned as a board member, the importance of process, systems, transparency, communication, right? All of those things. So Carrie, I think, was excellent in teaching and learning, looking ahead to new ideas around personalized learning, online learning, how personalized learning supports the needs of all students, but even more so students that are struggling, which is why it was piloted at La Cuesta. He was excellent in really procedural matters and really wanting to do the right thing for equity and what that would look like, and how do we incorporate that into our district on a larger scale. So, yeah, I would say there was challenges certainly with communication. So I wouldn't say, "Oh, he failed." I would say, "He did a B." Some days he might have done, like I would say I do. One day I might have a B average, but then, hey, I got an A on that test and now it raised my score, so the next day I did this well. But, ugh, I did this, I should have done something differently. Now I've got a C for the day. So I would say on average, he was a B, or, you know, depending on the situation, depending on the day. But he really worked hard. And I think he was given, I think he was given a bad rap about things that, when in fact, he really did do a lot for this district.
All right, let me, let's talk about the equity issue, because that's obviously, you know, a huge emphasis for the district and as well as a campaign issue. I think a lot of people are confused, and I know I was and somewhat still am, about the difference between equity and equality. Can you talk about what you mean when you say equity and how it's different than equality?
So equality means everybody gets the same fair treatment. We are all treated equally. However, equity means that we are providing scaffolding to those so that we can, they can meet us at the same level as everyone else. We don't all start at the starting gate in the same place. We start from different perspectives. We start with perhaps as an ELD emergent learner or a student with disabilities, or someone who's struggling with ADD, or someone who is just a gate out of the track, you know, achieving student. Everybody comes at different levels. What's important about equity is that it's not taking away from the high achievers. We still have, and I've always believed in, and Carrie was strongly about this, we need to keep pushing our high achievers and making them continue to push them and grow them. I mean, that is what we need to do. We also need to help those that can't even get to the starting gate. We need to provide scaffolding, ways of support, and getting them up to that level so that we can all start. And one of those ways is allowing our curricula to have cultural relevance to it, because students and evidence-based research has stated and shown this. If they can identify with the curriculum, they are more apt to engage. And it doesn't mean it has to be a history class. It can be a language arts class, it can be a math class, it can be music. If I'm going to play music in the classroom and I want to engage my students, and I have 90% of my students are Latinx students, I'm not going to play, you know, Mary Had a Little Lamb. You know, I'm going to think about what is culturally relevant to this community to engage these students to want to learn and to want to step in and take up the knowledge.
You've, you've talked a lot about systems and the importance of systems, policies, procedures in terms of managing. Do you think that the Santa Barbara Unified School District is afflicted by systemic racism?
Oh, I think there's racism, certainly. We're a bureaucracy, of course. I think, I think that's what we're trying to fight against. We're trying to dismantle, and we're finding it in nuances and also blatantly. It was really important to hear from the Black students that came to advocate for changes in the district. What they advocated for, we had started processes in, but obviously, it wasn't visible to people, and it wasn't being acknowledged or necessarily seen. One of those is the hiring practices of the district. How, the concern was, we do not have enough teachers of color, which we don't, to teach the classes in our district, so that students can see themselves in the person that's teaching. A part of it is being able to connect, but also not just curriculum-wise, but the way that teachers teaches, and also the sensitivity around teaching, around these issues. So is that answer your question?
Yeah, but let me follow up, because obviously you've been, the incumbent board has taken a lot of heat about the Contract with Just Communities for Implicit Bias, somewhat for the Curriculum of Ethnic Studies, the multilanguage immersion programs and so on and so forth. And, you know, as I try to break this conflict apart, and it's obviously going on at a national level, too, there, you know, there is a traditional way of looking at our institutions, whether it's education or the courts or anything else, you know, this liberalism, this political and moral philosophy, that everyone is equal before the law, and it's all about the individual. We have a colorblind society. But now, you know, there's a much deeper argument, I think, that could be based, you know, theoretically on critical theory or critical race theory, that we really have to look at systems and groups. And I think that that's where the core of the argument is. Do you feel that the board has done enough in explaining to people? I mean, you know, Brian Campbell, who's running, you know, he says, "You know, I look at these programs and it says white people are oppressors. I'm not an oppressor," you know, and I think, you know, what's being lost there is the difference between as an individual and as a group and the way that systemic things exist. Do you think the board has done enough in explaining that?
Maybe not, you know, maybe not. I believe that we certainly launch into these conversations in board meetings. We certainly have talked about our utilizing, you know, our LC, our LCAP, you know, framework to support our students with needs. We certainly talk about the importance of why we think Ethnic Studies is a program that is going to benefit all students, not just students of color, in terms of engaging in the curriculum. I, but I feel like there's an assumption that if you're providing cultural relevance to curriculum, that people don't see that as a benefit. They just say that, "Well, that's, 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 why are you talking about that? You're not talking about literacy and math." Well, it's how, it's the pedagogy. It's how you teach literacy and math with the framework of equity around culturally relevant curriculum. So it's how you are teaching the concepts that is how we engage the students. And that is not, it's not easy for people to get that, to think, "Well, that doesn't really matter," because, you know, for Brian and for me, I was a white Caucasian woman. I was raised with a Eurocentric historical perspective, except my father was a historian who actually was one of the forefounding of the Chicano Studies Department at UCLA. It was his leadership in the Latin American Studies Department, and he became the president of Latin American Studies as a white male who couldn't learn Spanish. He just was just, language was not his deal. And, but he took the leadership to say, "We need to do this. We need to bring this information forward. We need to bring these histories forward, because this is not included in the California history books," you know, and in the National History books, because he was involved in creating a California history textbook.
One of the things that drives me nuts about the school board meetings is you have public comment, and you get these very emotional and touching, in some cases, testimony about things, and you're not allowed to say anything supposedly, you can't respond. So when you hear, I don't know, people from Fair Education or some dad who says, "My, you know, my white son was bullied after this class," and so on, I mean, what do you, does that frustrate you? Do you want to respond directly to those things?
Well, I respect everybody's opinion, and I welcome public comment. I welcome hundreds of emails, Jerry, hundreds of emails, all the time. And they're not the majority ever really good. They're actually telling you everything that you're doing wrong. I did get a really great one the other day from a teacher who said, "Thank you for bringing up those questions that you raised in the board meeting about the rigidity or not of remote learning hours." Because I said, "Well, wait. Do the teachers have to work for four hours online with their kids in junior high? Does this have to happen?" And Sean Carey said, "No, you know, they can do asynchronous and synchronous work." Well, this teacher was like, "Well, I didn't know that." So, I mean, part of my role is to provide transparency of information and to just open that conversation. But to me, it's how I'm learning, you know, it's how I understand and how I learn. And granted, the people that show up to do public comment, and there are many at a time, it's for certain issues, I respect that. And that's why we've given them their time. It's not like we're not listening to it, and it's not like we haven't gotten hundreds of emails, and it's not like we haven't responded in phone calls, meetings, you know, with masks, you know. So part of the role is, and the job is, communication and being that liaison and being that person. And the problem is, the messenger doesn't always get a good rap, you know?
All right, let me ask you a couple of real quick things. How concerned are you that this conversation about equity, implicit bias, ethnic studies, language immersion, has gotten really polarized and that there isn't a unity about these kinds of policies going forward?
Well, I think it's a challenge. I think it's a challenge nationally, and it's a challenge here. I think there's not going to be an answer tomorrow, Jerry. It's not going to be like everybody's going to suddenly go kumbaya, and we love everybody, and this is great. It's a democracy. It's a democracy. But if we could at least be willing to listen to the other side and hear why and see the outcomes for students that really for students that really have benefit from being able to see themselves in the curriculum, and see the benefits of how we are doing equitably wise in terms of our systems around our, not only our hiring practices, but how are we looking at our professional development practices? How are we looking at our, our class climate? And I, I do want to say one thing. I support, and I have supported Just Communities, but I'm also one, and, and, but I'm also very much pushed for evaluation. All of our programs to be evaluated. They must be evaluated. And one of the pushes that I pushed for with the Just Communities was, it couldn't just be when they first brought it forward from the district, they said, we're going to do a quantitative study on Just Communities, because you guys want evaluation. I'm like, no. It needs to be quantitative and qualitative. We need to have interviews. We need to talk to people, and we can look at the data of the surveys. But all of our programs need to have evaluation, because we need to see what are the outcomes. So we're supposedly going to be getting that, with the results of that examination soon. I also welcome other organizations to come forward that might be providing us with different perspectives. It would be great to have an organization or group of people that can come more and bring in a focus that I don't think we've had as much in terms of bringing the African-American perspective. We need to bring in multiple perspectives from multiple organizations in a cohesive, comprehensive way to ensure that we are really addressing the needs of all of our students. And, and, you know, that's it.
Okay, let me add two quick things, because we're running out of time, but I should know this, and I, and I don't clarify this for me. The governor just vetoed legislation that would require ethnic studies as a condition of graduation. The, the Santa Barbara District has already put ethnic studies into the curriculum in, in terms of two courses. Why, why is that?
Well, we, we, first of all, we were spearheaded this ahead of the game because of the importance we felt that it brought towards for our students. And so as, what we did was say, we want to bring forward ethnic studies as a high school requirement, and we're going to go through the processes of, of how we can ensure that, you know, students of a different race, ethnicity, gender difference, indigenous population have an opportunity to see their experiences in the, in the curriculum. The fact that Newsom has paused it for right now doesn't mean it's over. It's, it's, we're still moving in that trajectory. The, the universities are doing it. They're required to do ethnic studies. The, the concern right now is, and what Governor Newsom is saying, is that he doesn't support the content of the curriculum that they have developed. He says it's inefficiently or insufficiently balanced and inclusive. But he does support the concept of, of ethnic studies. So it's really about the devising up and developing up of a community input curriculum and ensuring that that's, that we're meeting those needs.
Well, as I understand, one of the concerns is that there's a lot of Jews who have a problem with the, with the way that antisemitism is or is not included in that. Are you comfortable that that issue is properly addressed in the curriculum that we have adopted?
Yes, and I think we've had involvement with the Anti-Defamation League in that conversation, with the executive director bringing, it's important that we hear from our constituents in our community. And I think crucial to this process and the movement forward for this program is that we need to see ethnic studies as being held in front and center in the district, but that the process remain transparent with the community, and that the community is able to provide input on an ongoing basis and not feel shut down, and not feel that they don't have any process in this. And it needs to be implemented with fidelity as a critical interdisciplinary program. It, it, it has to be considered in all of those factors. So your question is, well, now you've got this in place, now what do you do? Well, we do what we're doing, which is we work on refining and developing the curriculum. We're working with university scholars. We're going to be working with the community. We're working with the teachers. We just hired Atossa, who actually, I think, was involved in launching the program in San Francisco very successfully. We're putting things in place, and I would hate to see anything that we've done disappear or go backwards. It's not a case of never happening. It's a case of making sure we're, we're doing it with fidelity and respect and interdisciplinary of all populations.
All right, let me, let me just read you something from the course outline for the English nine ethnic studies. And I just want to get, get your response to this. It says, "Students in these courses will study race through the intersections of social identities such as ethnicity, culture, gender, sexuality, ability, language, immigrant status, and class. They will analyze indigeneity, aspects of decolonization, white supremacy, oppression, and privilege, and work towards empowering themselves as anti-racist leaders who engage as social, in social justice activism." Is, is it the, the role of the school district to be preparing students to be social justice activists? Is, are, do you agree with that?
I would say, but you're speaking to a social justice activist.
I understand.
So, so in my higher ed classes, I'd say yes. I would say what we're trying to do.
These are ninth graders. These are ninth.
We're just trying to, and for, we're trying to provide opportunities to learn in an inclusive curriculum about multiple perspectives, intersectionality. We're, we're suggesting that when you go and you explore these situations, and you explore this, this, these experiences, and these movements that haven't been part of the curriculum, that you are looking at it through a social justice framework. Whether they become an activist or not, that's not the intent, I believe. It's the, the intent is actually to understand, to be aware and be globally attuned to our world, so that you're not going out there with bias or supremist activities, because you believe everybody, even though I'm different and I look different, we still are human beings and we still want to work together and get along. So we're preparing students for a future that has yet to be discovered or created. And in doing that, and in this internet world, and in this global situation, we want them to be as well-versed about other populations and communities so that they can be successful and achieve and just, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do. I mean, bottom line is, it's the right thing to do, Jerry.
Okay. All right, well, that's a good place to leave it. I, I really appreciate you taking the time and, and drilling down on some of these issues, because there's a lot of debate about them, and people make statements and so on, and, and it's, it's very good to talk to you about the substance of that. And, and thank you so much for, for taking the time to, to speak to our viewers, Jackie.
Well, I just want you to know, Jerry, that I appreciate you bringing me on, and I think it's important that whether I win or lose in this race, I believe strongly that we have, as a, as a goal, we need to support our students. Their students come first. And no matter what, those students come from so many diverse backgrounds and so many experiences. Many live ten in a house, you know, some are studying in a closet with five other people. It's critical that we are supportive, understanding, transparent, communicative, and inclusive, and designing our work for not only them, but also for students like my son, who was just, he achieved, he just, there was no issue with it. I was lucky, because when I was growing up, and when I was raising him, I didn't have to worry about him. I could just, oh, you'll be fine, and he was. But not everybody has that situation, and not everybody is successful that way. So I hope, and, and I believe that we have an opportunity here, and I would never want us to go backwards, and and I'm, I, I believe that I am the right person to be on this board. I believe so with Wendy and Laura. I think as a a trifecta in this group, we have the leadership, the experience, the knowledge, and can, and just continue to push the envelope and keep, keep us moving forward. And in this pandemic, to bring our kids safely back to school. So, so I appreciate this opportunity, and I just want you to know that I appreciated your questions and your sense of humor, and, and I, and I look forward to having further discussions.
All right. And if people want to know more about your campaign, what's the website?
Yeah, it's Jackie, J-A-C-K-I-E-R-E-I-D dot org. And hopefully, my mailers are getting out. So it's just, you know, it is, it's, it's, we're on a roll. I'm hoping that, you know, this will be over sooner than later. And just, you know, go Jack, go team.
Okay, Jackie, thank you so much.